Alright, so the riders, options and provisions are really big part of your exam, right? You definitely want to learn these. And take some time to study these and along with the actual types of life insurance, alright? So every state has a different like quantity of questions that they ask for this part of the exam. But I'm gonna go over basically a study guide that I made that's gonna help you get through your course. And if you like the study guide, you can email me for a copy. And then also, I have 21 other study guides that you can get along with it for only $19. So anybody on YouTube watching, the link will be in the description of the video. And anybody who's watching through this, then by all means, just reach out and then zoom chat afterwards. So we're gonna be sharing the screen here. And if at any time the connection falters or something, just let me know. Alright, so here we have the I'm just gonna go through some vocabulary words so that you guys understand what these are. And then over time, you know, if you have any questions, just put it in the chat. But hopefully this helps you guys get a better understanding of everything. And I'm also gonna make someone co-host to let people into the meeting. Is anybody here able to volunteer for that? Who knows how to work Zoom? If not, I'm just gonna pick someone.
I don't know how.
Okay, well, here, here's your first test. You're on a computer, Nikki?
Well, yeah, we could learn.
Okay, so you see, I just made you co-host. Now you see how it says someone's in the waiting room?
I'm sorry, let me get my volume up there.
Sorry, do you see, do you see where it says someone's in the waiting room? Alright, you'll, you'll see it pop up as you join.
Kristen, admit?
Yeah, I just clicked to admit her, but yeah, that, that's what you would do. So this is for any state exam.
Okay, I'm just gonna do that while you speak.
Yes, please. Thank you so much. So someone just asked, is this for the Georgia exam? This is for, this is for every exam. So every exam tests on pretty much the same stuff, alright? I mean, life insurance is not a, a new thing. You know, these riders aren't new things. These have been around for like hundreds of years. So most of the content on the exams is gonna be the exact same. The only thing that's different is the state laws. Actually, if you, if you took your Georgia course and then you bought a Florida course, you would notice that every chapter is exactly the same, except for the last chapter that covers the laws. The only difference, differences from state to state are things like, how long is the free look period? How long is the grace period? Stuff like that. So you just wanna go through your course to, to check that state specific stuff. But I'm gonna be covering general content here that's gonna be tested on every state. No matter what state you live in, this is gonna be tested on it, okay? So absolute assignment is when you completely transfer the rights of a policy to another owner or to another person, okay? That's called the assigning. So there can be collateral assignment though, which is when people will want to hand over ownership of their policy for a loan, part ownership. Now, when you have absolute assignment transfer, that means that the original owner of the policy can no longer make any decisions on the policy. They can't change the beneficiary. They don't have access to cash values, anything like that. It's completely transferred over to someone new, okay? So all rights and control of the policy are transferred to, to a different party. In collateral assignment, which we may get into here, I believe it's another vocabulary word. In collateral assignment, essentially what happens is part of the rights are given up to that policy. So like, say, like, if the loan is for $30,000, then maybe like rights to $30,000 of the policy would be sacrificed or forfeited to the loan company, to the bank or credit union or whatever it is. Anybody have any questions about that? If you're on YouTube, you can just drop a question in the comments or if you're here live with me on Zoom, then you can just ask. Alright, everybody got that? Alright. Thanks for the cameras on too, guys, like the faces. So here, like it says, John assigns his life insurance policy to his friend Mark to secure loan. Mark gains full control of the policy, but John holds rights to any value above the loan amount. So on the study guides too, either for each, each topic, there's a vocab words and then review notes. So on the vocab words, what I did is I put an example for each one, so that'll help you guys learn. If you find any mistakes, let me know, please, because I'm not perfect, so. Accidental death, multiple indemnity rider. It could also be a double, double indemnity rider. An accidental death benefit rider provides extra payment to the beneficiary if the insured's death results from a covered accident. This extra payment is usually a multiple of the policy's face value, such as two or three times the original amount, offering the most cost-effective way to increase coverage temporarily. So accidental death benefit riders are really cheap. Anybody wanna take a guess why?
They're not, they don't happen often. It's an accident.
Exactly, yeah. So the premium for a life insurance policy is based on how much the company thinks they're gonna have, or how, what, if the company thinks they're gonna have to pay it out, the premium is gonna be higher. If they don't, then the premium is gonna be lower, right? So it's essentially higher if it's a higher risk. And it's only a little bit more to double or triple the death benefit if someone passed on accident. So it's a pretty good selling point, because people are like in their head, oh, I got a ton of, ton of, ton more coverage, probably never gonna pay out, but you know, because, but it's a, some, what someone can do. So exactly right here, Emily has a life insurance policy with a face value of $100,000. She adds an accidental death benefit rider that pays out double the face amount. If she dies in an accident, her beneficiary receives $200,000. Any questions about that? Accidental death benefit riders usually expire by a certain age, like 65 or 70. Alright, because obviously if someone slips and falls when they're 91, that's a little bit riskier than if someone slips and falls when they're 21. Makes sense? Alright. Next, we have the accelerated benefits rider. So the accelerated benefits rider allows the policyholder to access a portion of the death benefit while they're still alive, if diagnosed with a terminal illness, expected to result in death in one to two years. So say you go to the doctor and they're like, hey, you know, gonna pass in a year or two. Then you, if you have a life insurance policy, a lot of companies will allow you to access the money ahead of time. Right? Anybody wanna take a guess as to why that company started doing that? Why they make think companies started giving people money before they pass if they're terminal?
People may not wanna buy insurance if, if, if they're, you know, 78 years old and, and and they don't expect to live long term anyway.
Yeah, could we want Kelly, any, any, any guesses? No? So you guys remember learning, maybe you haven't learned about these yet, but have you learned about viatical settlements?
About what?
A viatical settlement or a life settlement? So someone will sell their insurance policy to get money upfront. So people used to have, say someone had $100,000 life insurance policy, or we'll get this one, a $500,000 life insurance policy, right? If Maria was terminally ill, maybe she needs money to take care of treatments and, and whatever the case may be. She needs money right now. So what people used to do before this benefit is sell their policy. So they would sell to the highest bidder. If someone said, okay, you're gonna die in a year. I'll give you $400,000 now. I'll collect $500,000 when you die. It's kinda messed up too, right? It's kinda like, it's kinda like an ethical thing there, so. They, they started implementing these benefit riders so that people didn't have to sell their policy and sacrifice some of the benefit, right? Accumulate interest option. So the accumulate interest option lets the policy owner leave dividends with the insurance company turn interest over time. The interest earned is taxable as income for the policy owner. So accumulate that interest. So you guys remember on, you may or may not know, but whole life policies accumulate cash value. If it's a participating policy that is sold by a mutual insurance company, mutual insurance companies sell policies that participate in dividends, okay? So mutual insurance companies sell policies that participate in dividends. So, so like you can hang out if you want, but if, if you wanna go, that's fine too. I'm covering, this is a licensed course stuff, if you already passed. So essentially, someone can receive dividends and as, it's, it's like a return of unused premium is what the, the insurance company looks at dividends as. It's like, it's just extra money that the company gives you at the end of the year. There are a few options that you can do with it if your policy has earned dividends. One of them is to accumulate at interest. So one of the dividend options is to leave the dividends with the insurance carrier to collect interest. So that's like if you gave me $100 a month for life insurance, okay? And I was like, hey, Latoya, you know, I, I was investing the money you gave me and I actually made a little bit extra. And it wasn't as expensive to have your policies I thought it was, so I'm gonna give you some money back. We're, and we're gonna call it a dividend. And that, that's essentially what happens. And then Latoya could say, no, you know what? You hold on to that. And then you just pay me the interest that's earned on the dividends. Okay? Alright, assignment clause. This permits the transfer of policy rights to another party. So we just covered absolute assignment. The assignment clause allows someone to have an absolute assignment transfer of rights. Any questions about anything I've covered so far? If you're on YouTube, you can drop the questions in the comments too. Alrighty, automatic premium loan provision or rider, automatic premium loan rider. So this allows hold on, I think I have a question here. This allows the insurer to cover a missed premium payment by borrowing from the policy's cash value at the end of the grace period. So a lot of life insurance policies have a, say there's a 60-day grace period or a 30-day grace period. Let's say 30-day grace period. The grace period is the amount of time after the premium is due that the insured can still make their payment without the policy lapsing, okay? It's like, you know, you, if a, if your car loan is due today, you have 30 days to pay it. If it's after 30 days, then it hits your credit as being 30 days late. Same thing with insurance, but they just cancel the policy. The policy becomes lapsed. So what automatic premium loan riders do, they're usually automatic on policies, but sometimes you have to select them. Like one company we sell, you have to select it. I don't know why, but they make you do it. So what it does, it will borrow a premium value from, so say, say the premium, we'll give an example here. Alex misses a premium on his life insurance policy. The insurer uses the automatic premium loan to borrow from Alex's cash value to cover the payment. This keeps the policy active until Alex starts paying again or the cash value runs out. So essentially, say Alex's premium is $100 a month and he has $1,000 in cash value. If he, if, if he misses his payment by more than the grace period, right? If he doesn't make his premium payment and the grace period passes, that safety net period, then instead of his policy lapsing, it will just take the payment out as a loan against the cash value. That makes sense? Anybody have questions about that? Okay, anybody need me to cover that again? Alright. Cool. Next, cash option. So cash option, this is a dividend option, okay? Another dividend option. The reason why it's mixed up is because these are in ABC order, okay? Meaning why we went automatic premium loan and then cash option. So the cash dividend option permits, it allows the policyholder to receive dividends in cash payments. Okay? Alright, so meaning, hey, just give me my dividend. So last time I said, Latoya told me, Justin, you hold on to them. Keep, keep making interest with them. Keep letting them earn interest. In this case, she's like, no, give me my money. I want it now. It's my money and I want it now. So she's like, just keep paying my dividends, okay? Alright, cash surrender option. So this is, so there's dividend options, but then these are non-forfeiture options. Cash surrender option is a non-forfeiture option. So a non-forfeiture option is a provision, it's, it's an option in the life insurance policy that means that if someone has cash value, that they can't just lose it. They can't just lose all that equity they've built up in their policy. Because if, say someone, like that example with Alex, right? He's got $1,000 in cash value, just because his policy lapses and he misses his payment or he wants to cancel at some point, that doesn't mean he just loses that cash value. That's like a permanent thing. It's like if you have equity in a house, right? Once you sell the house, you keep the difference in equity. It's not like the banks just like, oh, you didn't finish paying off your loan, so we're gonna keep the equity. Right? If there's equity, then, then you, you, then, then he gets to keep it. So cash surrender option is when the policy owner takes the policy's cash value. After this, the policy no longer has insurance coverage. Insurers can defer paying cash value for up to six months. So say Alex is like, you know what? Cancel my policy. Let me just, give me the cash value. Okay, cancel my policy, give me the cash value. Collateral assignment, this is what we had just covered, where they transfer the rights of an insurance policy to a creditor as collateral for a loan. So say Alex is getting a, or Emma right here, Emma, or sorry, the creditor has the right to be repaid from the policy's proceeds up to the amount of the debt with any remaining funds going to a designated beneficiary. Example, Emma assigns her life insurance policy to her bank to secure a business loan. If she passes away before paying the loan, the bank will receive the loan amount from the policy proceeds and any excess will go to her designated beneficiary. Okay? And this is saying, if I give you these study guides, please just don't go pass them all out. Alright. I mean, I'm not actually gonna take legal action against anybody, but please don't do it. Took me a long time to put these together.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll look for the email, it's good stuff.
Cool. I'll put the link in the chat after this.
Oh, I don't know where to find the channel. Not used to Zoom, I'm used to Teams.
It's okay. Well, I'm sharing my screen, so it's a little bit harder to find now. But when, when we're done, I'll stop sharing the screen and I'll, I'll put it in the chat, put the link in there. If I put my email here, you guys can always email me for the thing too. You may, you may see a pop up there.
J V E, uh, the J V E W.
Yeah. Consideration clause. So the consideration clause requires the policy owner to pay a premium to secure the insurer's commitment to provide benefits. The policy owner's consideration involves submitting the application and paying the premium. Details about the amount and frequency of premium payments are outlined in the consideration clause. Essentially, the policy owner provides a completed application and initial payment, specifying the amount and schedule of future premiums and requests consideration for insurance. So they're saying, hey, here's my money, here's my application, will you consider me for this policy? Does that make sense? So the, and then, and then, so the, the insured, the person who wants the insurance, they have to submit the premium and the application. So they're essentially telling the insurance company, hey, this is it. Will you take me or not?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Uh, which part? The whole thing for consideration?
Oh, never mind. I thought you said my name.
Oh, I did earlier.
Oh, okay.
I was just using you as an example.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no problem. I'm going through people's names here, trying to keep everybody engaged. I know this isn't the most exciting material, so.
Oh, it's riveting.
The best part about this exam is you only gotta take it once if you pass it.
Really? It doesn't expire and you have to redo it?
No, just continuing education.
Excellent.
Yeah. So dependent riders or other insureds rider. Dependent riders allow additional individuals, typically family members such as spouses and children, to be added to the primary policy as insureds. So this is like, hey, I got a policy on me. Let me get my kids and my wife covered too. I don't have either, but that's, that's what it would be. So when we sell policies here at my agency, we sell whole life policies typically to people over 60. If anybody watching this, obviously on the Zoom, you guys are already in. But if anybody watching this on YouTube would be interested in, in working with me, we provide all the leads to our agents at no cost. You can work from home. It's the absolute best setup out there for new agents to get started. We've been doing it 40 something year agency. No, no one has anything like we do. No one invests in agents for life insurance, the way, the way that we do. So a dependent rider, the ones that we sell, we, they're called, we call them grandchild riders. So it's children's term insurance on our policy, so the way that it works on our insurance, and there, there's a bunch of different types, but I'm just gonna break it down for you on the ones that we sell here. We sell whole life policies to people over 60 to help them take care of their final arrangements and make sure that, or leave a little gift behind to their family or something like that. They can add children or grandchildren who are under the age of 18 to the policy for only $2 a month. They get them, it's like $10,000 of life insurance for $2 a month. And it lasts until they're 25 years old. So it's, it's like a term, it's like, it's just getting someone term insurance as a rider on the policy. Okay. Um. Next, dividend option. So we just went over those, but these refer to the various choices a policyholder has for utilizing dividend payments from their insurance policy. Okay? Example, Lisa receives dividends from her whole life policy. She can use them in cash, apply them to reduce premiums, use them to purchase more coverage, or like Latoya wanted me to do at first, hold on to it, just pay me the interest that you earn on the dividends. The entire contract provision. So the entire contract states that the insurance policy, along with any riders, endorsements and the application, constitutes the complete agreement or entire contract between the insured and the insurer, okay? And what it says is the entire contract, it ensures that no outside documents or verbal agreements can alter the terms of the policy. So what it's saying is like, everything in the application, along with any riders or endorsements are typically changes or amendments, everything that's there is the policy. You can't be like, well, my agent said this a few years ago, right? It's like, hey, it's gotta be in there. Exclusions are specific conditions or circumstances outlined in a policy that are not covered by the policy. Right? So it could be like death from dangerous activities. Okay, so they say, okay, well, Maria, you are, uh, you, you like to skydive a lot and we're not gonna cover that. Someone asked how frequently I do these Zoom meetings. Once a week, once every other week usually. Times may change, so, on them. I try to do them at different times to accommodate people on different posts. Okay, extended term option. So this, remember the non-forfeiture options I was telling you guys about with cash value? Where if you have cash value, you can't lose it if the policy lapses or cancels. Well, one of the options of things that you can do with the cash value is called extended term. This allows the policy owner to purchase additional term insurance for a set duration with no further premiums required. Okay, so what the extended term insurance does, right here, so this is an example with Paul. Well, let's say Paul has $100,000 whole life policy and he has $15,000 in cash value. If Paul utilizes the extended term option, what this will do is use that $15,000 in cash value to buy a $100,000 term policy for however long $15,000 will buy it for. So they're just taking that value, that 15,000, and instead of him taking it as cash in a, in a cash surrender, or, or he, he just cashed it on the policy, he is saying, hey, you know what? Use that 15,000 in cash value. I still want life insurance, but I don't wanna keep paying on it. I still want the 100,000, but I don't wanna keep paying on it. How many years will $15,000 buy me of a $100,000 term policy? Any questions on that? Okay. Free look period, free look period. This is the time the policy owner has to review their policy to get their premium refunded. So essentially, policy gets approved, doesn't mean they have to keep it right away. Okay, free look period says, hey, you got a certain amount of time after the policy is delivered to return it for a refund. Okay? A lot of times it's 10 days, 10 to 14 days for life insurance. Grace period, we covered that. This is the time allowed after the premium due date during which the policy stays active without any penalties. Okay, so policy is active for, I don't know, however many days after the person misses their payment, like I covered 30 days, let's say. Typically, it's one month. But if the insured passes away, this is important, if the insured passes away during the grace period without paying the premium, the beneficiary, beneficiary will receive the policy's face value minus any unpaid premiums, okay? Guaranteed insurability rider. So what this does, this lets the policyholder add more permanent or whole life insurance at specified times without having to prove insurability. It covers certain life events like marriage, birth of a child, et cetera. Generally, it can be used every three years, allowing for increases in coverage up to the initial policy amount. So this is like, someone says, okay, well, every X amount of years, I wanna be able to add $10,000 in coverage to my whole life or something like that. Every time I have a kid, I wanna be able to add more and every, and if I get married, I wanna be able to add more. So it lets someone increase coverage at time intervals or specific, or specific life events that might warrant needing more coverage. You have a kid, it's important to get more life insurance. Any questions about that? Alright, if anybody has any questions, just drop them in the comments or the, the message box there. Or come up, it's fine if you're on Zoom, if you're on YouTube, thanks for watching. Subscribe to the channel, turn on post notifications. I will help you pass your insurance exam on the first try with my content. The incontestable provision or period. This states that after life insurance policy has been active for a certain period, the insurer usually can't dispute it. So what this means is if you have your insurance policy for more than two years, the insurance company can't dispute the claim. Now, if you, if someone dies in the first two years, the company's always gonna dispute the claim because they don't think you should have died that fast. If they did, they wouldn't have given you insurance, right? So like when, when, when you sell a policy with us, if you get started with us, then if you have someone die in the first two years, it's more common with the policies we sell because we sell to people over 65, 60, 65, so a lot of our clients are in their 80s. So if you have a claim in the first two years, the insurance company is always gonna ask for evidence that, that, what they'll do is they'll typically, they'll pull doctors' records and stuff to see, hey, was there something else going on that we didn't find or that you didn't disclose on the application? Okay? I had a lady one time, when I first started selling insurance, I sold her and her daughter a policy. She still has a policy, thank you. Her daughter did the blood test and she got denied and never told anybody why. And then like two months later, she passed from cancer and she got, it came up in the test, but she never told anybody. And it was, it was kinda crazy. She, they were like one of my first clients, so. Sometimes stuff like that happens and it kinda hits you for being in the, in the business, the stuff you get exposed to sometimes. That's like very, very rare, but it happened. Ensuring clauses, the ensuring agreement. This details the insured's company's primary promise to pay benefits to a specified person if a covered loss occurs. So it's saying, we are guaranteeing that you're covered for XYZ, alright? Also, guys, in your courses that you take, sometimes you may, you may see that the explanations are like super long, right? For some things, and maybe they could be broken down a little bit more simply and like, like I do in my YouTube videos sometimes and some of these guides. The reason why it's so long, you can thank your state's Department of Insurance for that because they require that company, that when someone submits a pre-licensed course, that it satisfies a certain time requirement. So say it's 30 hours, they say there has to be 30 hours of study material and they assume person, someone reads 100 words per minute. So that means you have to, you know, it's like a hundred and eighty thousand words or something like that, has to be in it to satisfy the requirement. Now, this stuff could probably communicated, be communicated in fifty thousand words or less, but it has to be longer. So if you find there's a lot of fluff in your course or a lot of stuff that's just way long-winded, that's exactly why. It's not the company, trust me, they do not wanna make any type any more than they need to. It's because the states require a certain time limit because the people who make these decisions have no idea what the implication is. Um, next misstatement of age or sex provision. So this is, uh, what this does, it lets the insurance company modify the benefit. If the insured's age or sex is incorrectly stated. Benefits are recalculated based on the correct information. If the insured's age is older than reported, benefits will be reduced. If the insured is younger than what they said, benefits will be increased. Now, so what they can do too is they they could adjust premiums as well. If they find out before the insured passes. Okay, so if someone says, oh, I had a lady a couple of weeks ago, she was seventy, she said she was seventy two, but she's actually seventy four. So I don't know, they just celebrated her seventy fourth, uh, her seventy second birthday. But her driver's license says she was born in nineteen fifty, which means seventy four. Her whole family is because they all celebrated it together. So I don't know, I don't know, I, the joke I have is like, you know, I know hitting forty is like a, is like a thing for people, so. Maybe she was like thirty nine, thirty nine, thirty nine, and then she just waited a few years to to claim the forty, I don't know. But. Um, if 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 someone is, if someone's paying a hundred dollars a month and they're forty years old. They're gonna get more life insurance than someone who's forty five in the same risk category for that same amount of money. Right? Because the person who's older for the same amount of money is gonna get less life insurance. So that's where they'll adjust it. So if say she passes and they're like, no, you weren't seventy two, you're seventy four. Then they'll reduce the death benefit to what it would have been if she got a, if the the age that she got a uh. It would have been reduced to to match the age essentially. And also a misstatement of uh, gender, right? So if someone, say someone has like a transition and they're like, well, I was a guy, now I'm a woman or whatever. So that the insurance company, they're they're, when that person dies, they're they're, they they don't care, right? They're gonna be like, well, you're you're a man because men. They have, there's different health exposures with men and women too, and you know, disease risks and stuff, so women typically live longer, so yeah. Okay, non-forfeiture options, I went over that. Um, this is, uh, these are options and choices. Available to a policyholder regarding the use of their cash value if they decide to terminate a policy with a cash value component. This ensures they do not lose their accumulated cash value. Essentially, if you're closing your account or surrendering your policy, you need to decide what to do with the cash value to avoid losing it. When you choose to terminate your policy, you have the option to surrender it, meaning just take the, take the money. Okay, one year term, this is a dividend option. So remember there's non-forfeiture options. And then there are dividend options. I have videos on both of those, okay? Non-forfeiture options, dividend options. One year term option. So Latoya, we're gonna bring it back to Latoya who I was paying these dividends to. She's like, you know what, Justin, this year with my dividend, I want you to buy me a one-year term policy, or I wanna buy a one-year term policy with it. And I'm just gonna make my coverage a little bit bigger for a year with that dividend. Okay, so to take that dividend and buy one year of term insurance of whatever, however much insurance it'll be for that dividend amount for one year. Paid up additions, this is a dividend option. This is the most common dividend option, this is the default. This lets the policy owner use the dividends to purchase additional whole life insurance with a single premium payment. So we'll look at the example. Mark chooses the paid up additions option for his whole life policy. Each year, his dividends are used to purchase additional small whole life insurance policies, increasing his overall death benefit without requiring extra premium payments. So he can increase his death benefit, premium stays the same. And it also, they also build their own cash value, right? So think about this, every little bit of whole life he's buying is gonna accumulate its own cash value, which is gonna earn its own dividends. So this is where life insurance cash values start to snowball and grow exponentially. Okay? So a paid up additions is the most common option if someone has. A whole life policy that participates in dividends. I used to sell those. I never saw anybody do anything except paid up additions. It doesn't make sense. All right, pay or provision. So this is, so that if the person responsible for paying premiums on a juvenile life policy, so a policy on a kid or a minor. If that person paying it dies or becomes disabled, this will waive all premium payments, making sure the policy stays in force. Okay, typically, um. I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that the premiums have to resume once the. Person becomes an adult, once the child becomes an adult, like eighteen or whatever, whatever is, whatever they decide in the policy, eighteen, twenty five, whatever.
So so that seems like it would not be good for the company. Um, Susan, but so so would you just explain that a little better?
Yeah, so say Susan buys a life insurance policy for her ten-year-old son with a payer provision. Or payer rider. If Susan becomes disabled or passes away before her son reaches adulthood, the payer provision will waive the premiums. Making sure the policy remains in force. So Susan won't have to pay premiums anymore on her kid's policy. If she becomes disabled or she dies.
Susan won't have to. Uh, so so essentially. The company is is bearing the burden of that payment.
Exactly, yeah, the company carries it.
Okay, so that's a pretty heavy duty rider.
Yeah, so essentially what happens is, um. It it doesn't last forever, right? So it's. There's also a, um, there's another rider, there's a waiver premium rider for regular life, so it's disability waiver of premium. We're gonna, we'll probably cover that.
Yeah, those two kinda confuse me, that the waiver, the disability thing.
Yeah, so disability waiver of premium is that if someone becomes disabled, they don't have to keep making payments on their life insurance policy. The insurance company will waive the premium. Usually there's like a waiting period, it's like thirty days to sixty days or something like. Like you have to be, it's not like, oh, I hurt my foot, I can't work this week, you know, it's like, no, it has to be something that's like really stopping them from working. Um, and in the health insurance exam, if any of you guys are studying that, there's something called disability insurance, which I'm making videos on right now, I'm expanding to the health part two. But, um. There is. For, the the same thing happens there, like if someone's disabled, obviously they don't have to keep making their disability payments, but there's a waiting period where. Like it's like thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, depending on what they're paying before the insurance will actually kick in. Here, I gotta close the door, my house is super echoey. Okay, much better. Policy loan cash withdrawal provisions. These apply to cash value proceeds allowing the policy owner to take out loans or withdraw cash from the policy. Okay, so this is just about, these are just provisions about taking out cash values. Reduced paid up option, this is a non-forfeiture option, non-forfeiture. So this is another option that you use if you have a cash value and you wanna get rid of your policy. This is reduced paid up options. You guys remember when I talked about extended term? Remember when I talked about extend? So extended term insurance is if you have cash value, you can use that cash value if you wanna get rid of your policy, you can use that cash value to buy. To continue your insurance coverage for however many years of a term policy that. Money will buy you. So say you have a hundred thousand dollar policy and you have five thousand dollars in cash value and you don't wanna keep making payments anymore, you just wanna stop. You can use that five thousand in cash value and it will buy a one hundred thousand dollar term policy for however long the policy will. Well, however, how long that amount of money will purchase a policy like that for. So maybe it'll purchase that hundred thousand dollars for another six years, seven years or whatever, you don't have to keep making payments. What reduced paid up does, the difference from a reduced paid up and extended term, extended term uses the cash value to buy term insurance. That equals the face amount of the whole life policy. Reduced paid up uses the cash value to buy a reduced faced amount whole life policy that you don't have to keep making payments on. Okay, so with the extended term, that five thousand dollars in coverage might get them a hundred thousand dollar policy for, you know, another five or six years. If they got reduced paid up, that five thousand dollars in coverage might get them eight thousand dollars of whole life that they never have to make another payment on. That's permanent. Accumulates cash value, all that stuff. Okay? Reduced premiums, this is a dividend option. This is essentially, we're gonna use Latoya again. Latoya says, you know, Justin, this year, I want you to use my dividends to help me pay my premiums. So it's just gonna lower her premium. Makes sense? All right. reinstatement provision, this allows you to restore a lapsed policy. So you have to provide proof of insurability and pay any overdue premiums. So if a policy lapses and you wanna get it back and forth, you have to prove that you're still insurable, go through underwriting again. And pay any past due premiums. A guy I know, he called me a couple of months ago, he was like, hey, Justin, my life insurance policy lasts. I had a uh, three million dollar term. Trying to get it back, but I'm diabetic now, but ain't gonna, ain't gonna happen. So he missed one of his payments and he lost his three million dollar policy, but I mean, you know. You gotta just be on top of, you know, you gotta pay your bills. That's just what it comes down to, pay pay bills, you'll be okay. Return of premium rider, so this allows, uh, what this does, it provides a a full refund of premium. Plus the face value if the insured dies within a specified period stated in the policy. So Josh purchases a term life insurance policy with a return of premium rider. If he passes away within the twenty year term. His beneficiaries will receive not only the policy's face value, but also the total premiums he paid over that time. If he survives the twenty year period, the the rider allows him to receive all the premiums he paid back in a lump sum. Or a percentage of it. For the exam, I think they assume.
Is that common? Do we do that? I mean, that's, some of this stuff seems like a not really very good deal for the company.
Uh, actually it is, the companies would rather have someone take return of premium insurance than regular term. Because they cost them a lot more money. So I mean, the premium is a lot higher, right? So the company says, okay, well, we're gonna invest your premiums for the next, so say it's a hundred dollars a month for the regular term and a hundred and forty. For the return of premium. The insurance company loves it because they're taking that forty dollars every month and investing it. They're getting forty dollars a month for twenty years and they're gonna invest it. And then they're like, sure, by all means, take back the premiums because we made way more than that on this investment over time. Yeah, so insurance companies actually like that. Um, I mean, a lot of, a lot of people opt for it because they don't understand. One, they maybe don't understand that that aspect of investing the money, but also people don't invest the money. So there's a big company out there called Primerica, they 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 focus on telling people to buy term insurance and invest the difference, meaning. Instead of buying a whole life policy, buy term and then put the difference in mutual funds and stocks and stuff like that to gain interest. Which, yeah, it makes sense, but the thing is, ninety nine percent of people don't actually do that and follow through with it, so return a premium term, um, does have. A pretty big role. We sell a lot of return of premium terms because people are like, yeah, whatever, I'll get my money back, that's cool. And you know, they they like it, so. Commissions are the same. Okay, suicide clause, so this voids the policy and denies the death benefit if the insured commits suicide in the first two years. Okay, so, um, they can't, it's obviously so that someone can't just buy a policy. Yeah, after that, you're good, yeah, you gotta wait two years. Yeah. All right, waiver of premium, this is the last one. Oh, last but not least, Nikki, waiver of premium. So this rider allows, sometimes it's called the disability waiver of premium. This allows the policy owner to stop making premium payments if they become disabled while the policy remains active. It is not a loan, nor does it provide cash payments. Instead, the insurer simply waives the premiums as if they were being paid regularly. Example, Emily's life insurance policy includes a waiver of premium rider after she becomes disabled or unable to work. The insurance company waives her monthly premium payments, keeping her policy in force. So this is saying. Hey, you're disabled, don't worry about making your life insurance payments anymore. Now, the thing is, guys, all these riders cost money. The only one that doesn't is the typically the accelerated death benefit rider, the terminal illness rider. And the automatic premium loan rider, those ones usually don't cost any money. All these other riders, waiver of premium, adding more people for a term insurance, um, return of premium rider. All of those cost money. So the insurance company understands, hey, this person might become disabled, then we have to keep making premium payments. Or we waive their premium payments. But they factored that in with the cost of the rider versus how old someone is. How long they think they're gonna have the policy, everything else, so. They do charge. So essentially their goal is to be like, okay, well, you know, if if this person gets the waiver of premium rider. Our goal is to guess by what age they'll be disabled, what are the odds of them becoming disabled? Based on our underwriting and how much, at what age would they be most likely to become disabled and how much will it cost? So they're gonna tack on money onto the premiums to hopefully make that money up before that person becomes disabled, if they do. Right? Same with like accidental death, that one costs more money because it's increasing. Anytime you're increasing a benefit value. Or potentially the insurance company would lose more money, you, it's gonna cost money. That's why I like accelerated death benefit, the person's gonna die anyway within the year. So that's why they're not really losing anything, right? The person usually still has to keep making their payments, but they could be fully disabled by that point, which if they had the disability waiver of premium rider, they wouldn't have to keep making payments. If they don't, they do have to make payments. Um, but yeah, so I hope this helped you guys, uh, here, I'm gonna stop the share here and then stop the share here. So, um, what I'm gonna do is put the link to this. Uh, this study guide that I just had there in the chat, I'll put it in there for people on YouTube. And then I'll also put it for the people on Zoom here who are working with me. If any of you guys on YouTube are, would be interested in working with me, I I teach people sales, the sales part. Um, so if you feel like I've helped you learn the licensing course part of it. Uh, I could probably help you teach sales too, so if you kinda vibe with my style of teaching there and explaining, then it'll probably help you. Understand some of the sales stuff a little bit easier as well, so trying to go. For here, okay, premiums. Here we go, uh, riders, options, provisions, vocab. Okay, so we're gonna share. Anyone with the link can view, okay? So this is one of the study guides, I'm gonna be putting it in the chat. It's a Google Drive link. Okay, I'm gonna put it in the Zoom chat as well, it's right there. Now, also, I'm gonna put a couple more links in here. This is to get more study guides, if you'd like. In addition to that, there, I have review notes on all that material as well for those topics, so it goes into a little deeper to help you guys, uh, learn it. A little better. And there there's actually one more free study guide that you can get using this link, it's on the types of life insurance policies. There's a lot more to the exam though, so, um, that link I put in the description there, that first one is the for the, uh, study guides. To get the additional study guides, I think it's actually twenty nine dollars to get twenty one extra. And then this next one here for additional practice exams. There, those are nineteen dollars for practice exams, these are approved by the state's departments of insurance. Okay, so all these exams, there's three, you just click that link right there, you follow the instructions to sign up. Um, it's nineteen dollars for three practice exams in your state. And they've been approved. Approved by the Department of Insurance, it's being legitimate practice, give out all the questions, right? That would, that one, it makes sense. Like, did I lose you guys? So, um, oh, because I clicked out of it. All right, cool. So I'm gonna end the YouTube stream here, if you guys wanna subscribe to the channel, turn on post notifications and uh, check out the videos on my channel, they can help.